Okay, we're ready to go if everybody's there. Ms. Chan, are you there? Oh, there you are. Okay, great. Okay, the next item is item number thirteen, twenty-nine Ava Road. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have email correspondence from planning, they have no concerns, and a five signature petition in support from residents on Glen Air and Ava Road. Is the agent on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Before we continue, I just want to tell you, I'm having serious problems with connectivity. You guys keep going in and out, so if I don't respond, that may be the reason.
Okay. Can you just identify yourself for the record and then I'll see? I have some speakers listed from number thirty-one, but it says interest, so I'm just gonna check if they're speaking in opposition or not.
It's Lauren Rose, I'm the architect, three eighty-eight Spadino Road.
Okay, thanks. Ethan? Hi, Ethan?
Hi there, can you hear me?
I can. I have three other people listed in the same slot at four thirty-one Ava Road. Are you speaking on behalf of all of them and are you speaking in opposition or are you just listening in?
I can mention that we're just listening in for interest. Daniel Sobel was going to speak, but we don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh. Oh, sure. Hi, Mr. Sobel, I understand you're on the line now.
Hi there, yes, I'm here.
Are you also just listening in or did you want to speak?
Yes, that's.
You're listening in, okay.
I'll just be listening in, that's me.
Okay, thanks a lot. Okay, panel members, we don't have any opposition speakers. Do you need a presentation or do you want to go direct to questions? Questions? Do any of you have any questions for Mr. Rose? Mr. Niffle?
Excuse me, this might have just been answered. In my notes, I had a question as to whether the owner of number thirty-one next door was in favor or not. Was that the first person that spoke who was going to just listen in? I assume if he's not speaking, he is in favor.
So, Mr. Rose, is Mr. Ruderman our?
Sorry, I can speak to that. We have had conversations with them. There is a private agreement about trees and things and fencing, so I believe they are in full support now.
Mr. Rose is?
Thank you very much.
Is Mr. Ruderman the owner of thirty-one then?
We spoke to the son and son-in-law.
Okay.
On behalf of the owners.
Okay. Panel members, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. Mr. Rose, we've read all the materials. We have no further questions. We don't need a presentation. Is there anything else that you want to add that wasn't in the submissions?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, panel members, let's take it into committee for a decision.
Madam Chairman, I'd be happy to start off on this one. I don't see any difficulties or problems with this application. It appears that it has a fair degree of support. It isn't in any way unusual, unique, or negative relative to the community. I'd like to move, bring forward a motion of approval without condition.
Okay, I'll second it by Ms. Valentini. Okay, so motion to approve moved by Mr. Niffle, seconded by Ms. Valentini, all in favor. Okay, the application's been unanimously approved, thank you. Item number fourteen, ten X Gamble Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Supporting material from Mr. Gaines, the applicant. We have correspondence from planning and transportation, they have no concerns. Forestry is asking for condition number one. We have correspondence in support from Aralex Apartments Travel Lodge at number two Gamble, and we have opposition, but there was no address provided, and I'm not showing any speakers listed. Okay, can I have the agent identify himself for the record, please?
Good afternoon, my name is Trevor Gaines, I'm the applicant and agent here on behalf of the owners.
Okay. Panel members, do you need a presentation for this or can we go straight to questions? Do you have any questions? Mr. Niffle and?
Mr. Gaines, could you just quickly review? There's a parking arrangement agreement, and I'm not exactly sure the property that's providing the off-site parking. Could you just clarify what the arrangement is?
Yeah, enable, part of our site plan application, we had a traffic study done. We're providing one onsite parking, which is going to be for visitors loading and loading for the retail store or whatnot. The parking study indicates there's ample street parking available for the additional spaces that this proposal generates. However, the owner has gone and secured five additional spaces in the nearby towers. That fifty-five Cosburn, I think, is one. Just a second. And fifty-one Gamble, just down the street. So, those are surplus spaces to those towers, and it's just a monthly lease arrangement so that in the event that any future tenant in our building requires parking, if they so choose, those spaces are available for them.
Thank you.
Any further questions, panel members? Seeing none? Okay, Mr. Gaines, we're ready to go into committees. Is there anything you would like to add that wasn't in the materials submitted?
Just the fact that we are in the middle of a site plan for the last couple of years. We've been working very closely with city planning and urban design to get it to this point. You know, basically, everybody is satisfied with what we're presenting in this kind of challenging subsized lot, which is why there's no comments or concerns from city staff. So ultimately, we think what we're designing here is a benefit to the community with the retail store for local residents to use. The three-story unit, three-story building, rather, five units, is very pedestrian in scale and massing, keeping with the number two Gamble, which is a three-story twelve-unit building, before all the towers start as you head towards Cape. Therefore, we think it's very desirable and we seek your approval.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's take it into committee for a decision.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to jump in on this one. I think this one fits in well with the context. I think it's going to be a good addition. It's kind of a unique site in that it's sandwiched, you know, between the three-story at the corner and then they've got these large towers around. So I think this three-story mixed use will fit in well with the area and will be a benefit, actually, and better than obviously what's there now. I don't see any concerns with the reduction in parking, and there is plenty on the street, we've heard, and then we've gotten a situation where there's off-site parking secured. So, I'm in support of this and I'd like to bring forward a motion for approval of the application, and it's going to be subject to urban forestry condition number one.
Okay, do I have a second or for that motion, Mr. Niffle? Okay, motion to approve, including forestry condition number one, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Niffle, all in favor. Okay, the application's been unanimously approved. The next item is item number fifteen, which is seven eighty-six Indian Road, and my understanding is that the agent is asking for deferral on this item because they're intending to change the scope of the project. Now, before I go to the agent, do you have speakers on the line, both of them? Okay, Mr. Sharma, are you there?
Yes, I am.
You still are asking for the deferral, correct?
Correct, so it's Vishal Sharma here, I'm actually the owner, not a representation of the owner. Since November, our things have changed from our side. So we're looking to move from a four-plexed second unit, so that will introduce new variances and will reduce some of the variances. So at this time, we're asking for a deferral until we can work with the examiners to identify the new variances and reduce some of the variances introduced by the four-plex. There are no objections from planning, transportation, but again, we don't want to waste the committee's time to review the file currently if we could defer it.
Understood. I'm just gonna go to the opposition. So, just so we're clear, you intend to reduce the scope of what's before us now.
That is correct.
Will you also be discussing the changes with the neighbors? In particular, the ones that are here on the line?
We did not receive any opposition letters. Nothing's been uploaded to the portal, so I'm not sure who the objections are coming from. We'd be more than willing to work with the neighbors if we knew the concerns that particular neighbors might have.
Okay, let me just go to the neighbors. So, Uma, are you there?
Hi.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
I can. Can you identify yourself, your name and address for the record?
Sure, it's Uma Venkataramaya, the address is seven eighty-two Indian Road.
Okay, so the applicant is asking for a deferral, and so are you in agreement with the deferral? They basically are going to reduce what they're proposing today and come back with a new application when they finish making revisions.
That sounds great.
Okay, thank you. Nadia, okay, Nadia, are you there?
On the north side? Hello?
Hi, can you identify yourself, name and address for the record, please, Nadia?
I'm Nadia Saragosa, and I live at seven ninety Indian Road.
Okay, so you probably heard that the applicant is asking for a deferral, which means the committee will not hear the application today. They are intending to reduce, make reductions to what they're proposing here and come back with a new application. And the agent has indicated that he will show the new proposal to neighbors before it comes before us. Are you okay?
Yes.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, I would like to talk to the owner, yes.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Sharma, so you've heard that the owners of seven eighty-two and seven ninety are okay with the deferral, but they do want a commitment that you're going to show them the plans before you come back when you've made revisions?
Yep, that is a commitment on our side. Again, we were not aware of any objections. We would have done our due diligence to address that. So, with the two individuals that have addressed the concern, we will be presenting these plans. We will knock on their door and have that meeting and consultation with them. With the deferral, I believe that a new package would be sent out to neighbors as part of the process, is that correct?
Yes, yes, it will. Often, it kind of comes, you know, they like a little more time, so if you're able to connect with people even before that, I think that's in everyone's best interest, including yours. Okay. Panel members, let's take it into committee then, so to the deferral.
Madam Chair, I think a deferral is appropriate in this case, given that the application's going to be changed and it will give them a chance to connect with neighbors. So, I'll bring a motion forward for a deferral of the application.
Okay, do I have a second or, Mr. Niffle? Okay, deferral motion moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Niffle, all in favor. Okay, your application has been deferred, sir. Thank you, and thanks to the neighbors. Okay, item number sixteen, one oh six Baby Point Road. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, covering letter from the applicants. We have email correspondence from urban forestry, traffic planning, TRCA and Heritage, and all of them are okay, except Heritage is asking for conditions in their February eighth report. Do I have the agent on the line?
Yes, hello?
Hi, Dan.
Hi, how are you today?
I'm good. Can you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, good afternoon, Committee Chair and members. My name is Dan Hornberg. I am the agent with a step to the property of one oh six Dunedin, or sorry, one oh six Baby Point Road.
Okay, are you aware of the Heritage Report?
I am, and that's the one item I would like to address and certainly be prepared to ask or answer questions with respect to any of the other, you know, variances if required. But specifically, the Heritage, I would like to speak to.
Okay, so, we're going to start the clock now. I don't think we need a full presentation on this, and the members may have questions, but please go ahead and speak to the Heritage Report.
Okay, I'd like to ask the committee to remove the conditions relating to the Heritage Planning request to retain an archaeologist for an assessment. This is an expensive process, and I don't believe it's required. If we were building a new house and there was an excavation or even grade changes, I could understand the need. The nature of our proposal doesn't require any excavation or any grade changes, and so I see no reason for the expensive requirement involved in doing an archaeological assessment. We were able to satisfy the TRCA and certainly the urban forestry with respect to the issues that they may have by retaining the existing foundation and building on top of it. So we therefore think with that in mind, we don't feel that Heritage, you know, planning should have any problems with what we're proposing. I wonder if they thought that it was an entirely new build and there was going to be excavation involved, but the reality is there's no excavation whatsoever. So I would ask the committee, if they were to approve this, to remove those conditions because it is an expensive proposition and there's simply no need. There is, there's no grade changes or no excavation through rear of the property whatsoever.
It's not showing us a designated heritage property, is it? I mean, unless something's wrong on the family.
I don't know. I can tell you that I built a home on Baby Point Road at number sixty-six, maybe five years ago, and it was an entirely new home, and there was no requirement at that time. So I was a little perplexed to see this one. But I hoped that it would be addressed at the committee simply because, you know, with no grade changes or no excavation. I mean, I would think the test holes that they would, you know, be required to do for an assessment would cause more disturbance than what we're proposing.
But is there some kind of heritage designation for this street? I mean, I see no mention of it. I'm just curious why.
It's more of an archaeology issue rather than heritage of the home just because of previous settlements that would have been in that neighborhood.
I see, just wondered, because it doesn't really mention any kind of history here, okay.
I think if you, Chair, if you look at the comments from Heritage Staff, maybe this is a good point to discuss. I think it's worthwhile to just reflect on what Heritage Staff is saying to us. Is that there is a likelihood that there's an Aboriginal burial site in and around one oh six Baby Burner, Baby Point Road. I'm not too sure whether, given that suggestion.
My?
Sorry?
I didn't mean to interrupt, I apologize. My understanding is that there is no heritage designation. There is not a heritage designation. And given their concerns, again, if I were building a new home, I could appreciate their concerns, but we're building on the existing foundation, no excavation whatsoever or no grade changes. So, it makes no sense to invest in an expensive proposition to have somebody come out and actually dig test holes and say, yes, you can dig here or no, you can't dig here because it's really a moot point.
I just want to point out, just on that line of reasoning or whatever, but it does say in this report that, you know, we're, I don't think the fact that it's a designated heritage site or not has nothing to do with it. There's a section in Ontario Heritage Act that's referenced in this court that says sections forty-eight and sixty-nine make it a fence to make any alteration to a known archaeological site. So, I think that's probably why Heritage is bringing this up, and I think it is an important condition that we seriously consider. Sorry, I hear feedback from my mic, so I'm gonna stop talking.
The feedback? Go ahead.
Okay. Oh, my question is, since I just saw that this hasn't been communicated with the Heritage Department, that you're not doing any excavation. And also, when they asking for, is it archaeological study only level one? Usually, level one is only the beginning, that's top kind of research that identify where there will be further study. So, I'm not really too sure why it's not being discussed and clarified with the department because it is very difficult to know what the point is for this study.
I think it might have to do with the proposed rear deck because they will have to excavate to a certain degree to support the deck.
Oh, it has excavation?
Well, there will be the form of a post hole, if you will, a sonnet tube, eight inches by, you know, eight inches in diameter, a post hole dug, you know, to support the deck. If they consider, but there's no alterations to the ground or no alterations to, you know, I don't know that I would call that, you know, an excavation. I mean, anyone who puts in a fence anywhere along Baby Point Road is doing the same. So we're making no alteration to the rear yard whatsoever. And, I mean, it's one of the reasons that we proposed to do the project in this manner was to satisfy the TRCA and the ravines, and also because there's a very large tree in the rear yard. So we purposely designed around the existing property so that we wouldn't disturb any of the soil and therefore the tree. And, you know, we were surprised to see the condition that Heritage Planning asked for, but I'm wondering if it's just a standard condition they asked for and they weren't aware of the fact that there's no demolition or no excavation.
That's my question. Were you not in communication with them to have this clarified?
Do you know what? I reached out to them on a couple of occasions, and he said that he would give it some thought, and they never returned. They never returned, you know, communication. I don't know if it's a sign of the times with the pandemic, but there was no response.
Is it possible that there's a slight misunderstanding here? I'm hearing the applicant say that he's not actually going to disturb the land, that the nature of his proposal would not generate the concern that Heritage appears to want investigated through an archaeological report, and Heritage has then asked for an archaeological consultant to address a particular issue. Is it possible that we could rephrase a recommendation that allows the, without having to defer this application, that would allow the applicant to further negotiate with the Heritage Department about the need for an archaeological designation? And if Heritage determines that that need exists, then it would take place. That's terrible wording, but I guess what I'm saying, instead of actually recommending the solution, could we recommend a process that might lead to a better solution?
I do agree with Cal. I think that's a better compromise because I do know the archaeological study, it is a very expensive process. And we impose a condition based on some misunderstanding, and I don't think it's a good idea. But we do, we can put in a condition and encourage them to further study this to satisfy their Heritage Department.
If I could just jump in, I would be not in support of changing any conditions as recommended by Heritage. I mean, they're the ones that are the experts in terms of archaeological assessments and things that are required under the Heritage Act. So I would be leery of changing these conditions myself. And I did note, and it's noted in the report, that it is an offense under the Ontario Heritage Act for any party other than a licensed archaeologist to make any alteration to a known archaeological site. So if it's because of the deck, they're going to need some sort of assessment anyway. So I'm in support of the Heritage, Heritage conditions myself. I don't think they would just sort of recommend these conditions, in my view, unless it was a, you know, for a significant reason and it is known archaeological site. And I also note that the memo from Heritage is dated February eighth, so this, these conditions have been around for a long time. I don't know. There's chance to resolve it if, if they, they need it to.
Madam Chair, perhaps, given that there's no one speaking on this matter, the applicant can try to reach out to Heritage this afternoon and this item can be settled down until towards the end of the meeting and if he can resolve it, great. Otherwise, the committee will have to decide what to do.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. That's a good suggestion. So Dan, are you okay with that? Yeah?
I, I suppose. I mean, I'm, I'm wondering if, what, what Carl had mentioned, that would work. That allows us to close, you know, to close it up and, and I would go back to Heritage and, and see if they would, you know, I, I think, see if they would allow, you know, or disregard and allow us to go ahead because there is no grade changes. So if, if that would be acceptable, I, I would accept that. I mean, I think it's really the same thing. It's just, I don't imagine Heritage, I'm going to get ahold of anyone there this afternoon because I certainly haven't been able to for the last couple of months.
Chair, I'll weigh in. I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with that as a solution. I, I tend to lean towards what Lisa's saying. I, I know this area and it is a significant archaeological site. I, I don't want to guess as to what Heritage was thinking at the time. I think maybe with Barb's encouragement, maybe we can figure out a way that the applicant and the Heritage advisor could in fact connect today and, and help us better understand so that we can make an informed decision.
Okay. Mr. Or Dan, is this okay then? I mean, with
Yes.
With you, like, I'll, I'll, I'll hold it down for now. I mean, we're still on the morning session, so I'm not sure how long we're going to be here. But if, if you can give it a shot and, as Larry said, maybe Barb can help out and try to get ahold of somebody also to see if there's a different solution and then come back, you know, in a few hours. And we'll, we'll just look for your name. The staff can see once you log in. And I'll hold it down for now.
So what, so I will try to reach out to Heritage.
Yeah.
What, what would you have me do while I?
Well, I mean, you know, you've heard several of the panel.
I mean, in terms of timing. I mean, in terms of timing, reconnecting with.
Well, so we're going to be here a while, until at least six o'clock, so we can try to call you. I'm assuming the number we have here is, is correct, or we have your email also. But I guess.
The phone number you have.
Oh, I don't really want to say it for the entire public. Yeah, so.
That's okay.
Yeah. Unless you want a lot of strangers contacting you, you know, you never know.
No, no, I'm good.
Okay.
And then, Madam Chairman, I, I think the issue for, for the applicant, the issue is for you to clearly explain what it is you're proposing and, and to determine if there has been a misunderstanding. If there hasn't been a misunderstanding, if they understand the proposal, then their condition stands. I agree with both Lisa and, and Larry. But if there's been a misunderstanding and there's going to be less disruption to the site than Heritage understood, then perhaps they would consider a rewording of their condition.
Let, let me ask you this. If, if we moved forward and you made what they proposed as a condition and then moving forward, I negotiated with them, could they decide on their own or would this condition be carved in stone that I would have to do that?
You can ask them again.
That's what my condition, that's what my suggestion was earlier, but, but then we're not sure what word. We, we're not sure how much flexibility.
Sorry, I think, Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasure, I think you were weighing in on that question.
Well, I think the applicant has an opportunity to have that discussion with archaeology now, rather than having it in front of the committee while we're trying to have the hearing. So talk to them and then they can email me whatever their comments are if they're changing their comments.
Fair enough.
They can't answer how they would address that. They would have to.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll hold it down for now. Hopefully something can be mitigated to get this dealt with today. All right?
Fair enough.
So we'll be in touch with you later on this afternoon. Or vice versa. Okay, good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is item number seventeen, ninety-two McPherson Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, an arborist report from Sebastian Bravo, the consultant. We have drawings from Melissa Nguyen, the agent, email correspondence from planning. And we have email or correspondence from enforcement parking. We have a staff report from forestry. And they're asking for conditions one and three. We have ravine that also gave us a rev, or, I'm sorry, we have a revised zoning notice in front of us. We have a letter from Counselor Layton, who's recommending refusal, correspondence in support from ninety-four McPherson Avenue, which is next door. We have eighteen more form letters in support from residents on McPherson, Marlborough. And, yep, those are the two streets. Correspondence in opposition from ninety-nine McPherson, as well as the ABC Residents Association and one eighteen McPherson. Now, item eighteen is, is actually the other half of this semi. So perhaps we can hear them together. And Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasure, can we vote on these at the same time or do you want us to do a separate vote?
We can do a separate vote just because the recommended conditions are different and there is a revised zoning review for item seventeen. But other than that, any speakers registered are the same and the materials seem to be the same. Now, just to note, we did receive an email from both the ABC Residents Association and the counselor that they are no longer in opposition.
Okay.
Apparently there have been some negotiations, but the applicant can address that.
Okay, thank you very much. And members, so for number seventeen, we have forestry conditions one and three, and for eighteen, we have forestry condition number one only. Can I have the agent? Now, am I seeing something? Do I have two different agents here for? Okay.
Well, maybe because they are different owners, so maybe we have to hear them separately.
Yeah, okay, I guess. All right. Okay, let's go with item seventeen first, which is ninety-two McPherson. Do I have the agent on the line?
You do.
Okay, can you identify?
This is Robert McCaffey, the agent at Architect.
Have you been working together at all with the other agent, Mr. Kirschenblatt?
We are separate companies. We've been coordinating, but yeah, we're separate designers.
Okay, I do have speakers listed. And they're basically the same speakers for both applications. So is there any way for you two agents to somehow combine your presentations or are they going to be very similar? I guess you don't know.
All right.
Well.
Maybe we just do them separately.
Yeah, I'll ask you to start and then maybe Mr. Kirschenblatt can adjust and speak to differences between the two. Okay, go ahead. We're starting the clock now.
Good afternoon. I, I should start by saying we updated the variances. So with the ABC Residents Association, we're requesting to withdraw, to withdraw two separate, two variances. Is this the right time to talk about that?
Yeah, because let's hear what they are and see how it changes this.
So in this updated zoning notice, we just kind of marked it up. Item two, the maximum front wall height?
Actually, can, hang on, can you please use the notice that was sent out because that's what we have?
Um, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, so.
It's the variance.
So is it the main wall height that you want to remove?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, currently it's listed at eleven point nine four for the height we're requesting.
Okay.
And we're just eliminating that whole variance. We've redesigned the roof to not have to have a, a main wall height variance.
This is for front and rear?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the one under chapter ten point ten point forty point ten, brackets two, brackets A, under five, six, nine, twenty thirteen. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and then what's the second one?
This is the front door height. So this is ten, ten, forty, ten, six.
Okay, so that's number three on the notice.
That's eliminated. We're just lowering the whole house to, to bring the, the front door down to one point two meters. And then we're changing two variances as requested by the Residents Association. So this one's for floor space index.
I'm sorry, which?
We're reducing the.
Sorry, which one? I, which variance?
Floor space index, ten, ten, forty, point forty.
Variance number five.
Okay.
Variance five, yeah. So that's our area. It just, it's minor. It's down to one hundred ninety-seven point eight meters squared. And that's a, calculates to one point one seven times.
Okay.
And the final change, it's exterior stair access, ten, five, forty, sixty.
That's variance eight?
Eight.
I wish you would pull up the notice because that's very hard to track.
This is the last one.
So, okay, variance eight is chapter ten point five, forty, sixty, brackets three, eight, and then I, I, I. Is that the one?
Yeah, it's, it's listed as eight on, on the screen.
Yeah.
So that one currently is point one eight and we're changing that to point four or five meters. We're increasing the setback.
On both sides?
No, just the front. We're still zero to the sidewalk line. And that's it.
Okay.
And when we're ready, I can start the presentation.
That was part of your five minutes.
Okay. As you can tell, we've been talking to a lot of people. We're working with ninety McPherson to create a semi-detached house. They're, they will be constructing at the same time. We spoke with a city planner, who, we spoke with a lot of neighbors to got a lot of support. In our presentation material that we sent forward, we have a diagram describing the letters of support in the area and the letter of objection. We've worked with a lot of neighbors to address their concerns. We've worked with the ABC Residents Association to make some minor changes that got their support. And that's reflected in the drawing that was sent and these updated variances. There's three variances regarding building depth, FSI and front yard setback, which we believe are appropriate for the area. And then we have four variances to do with front yard setback, front porch stairs, soft landscaping and the basement stairs. The front yard setback is pretty similar to the existing condition. We're, we're almost in the same footprint of the existing house. The front porch, there was a large front porch here and we're making it a smaller front porch and creating basement stairs underneath the front porch. We're hiding the waste bins. And because we have almost a townhouse condition, this, this lower stair acts as a back door or utility entrance for the house. The soft landscaping is, is pretty similar to the existing condition.
You're over five and a half minutes, so can you wrap it up, please?
That's pretty much it. They're all mine. I can just answer them in questions.
Okay, I think what I'd like to do, because this, the objectors are the same, I'd like to go to the agent for number ninety, if I can. Are you there, Mr. Kirschenblatt?
Can you hear me? Hi.
Yeah, hi.
Hi.
Hi. So are, are you making changes to the variances also?
Uh, let me, I'll, I'll start, I'll be very short. So I'm Stephen Kirschenblatt, Kirschenblatt Urban Architecture. I'm the architect and agent for number ninety. We've been working together with Robert and, and number ninety since the beginning, when there was this opportunity to reconstruct these sort of rundown old homes on the property. And we, at the end, last minute, have run in, had a long discussion with the ABC, uh, right there group. And they have asked us to agree on two changes to the variances that we've requested, only two. And I think they've registered their support for the proj, project.
Okay, what?
So they, if, yeah.
Yeah.
So they, I, I could go through those two changes for you.
Yeah, please.
And they relate to, they relate to number nine on the, on the notice to the front and rear wall exterior main height. Instead of request at eleven point eight six, they, we've agreed to go to ten point four nine.
Okay.
And the same thing happens on number ten. So the, the height variance requested would go down from eleven point eight six to ten point four nine.
Okay.
And the, you know, all, and many of our neighbors, most of our neighbors are very much in support of the rebuild that we're doing. The buildings basically are sitting on the footprint of the old homes. So again, idea not to disturb the ground around them. And we have that one length variance, it only applies to the ground floor. And if you look at the drawings, you'll see that the house steps back on level two and level three considerably. So it only applies to the ground on the length. And there's a number of variances related to the mutual driveway condition that we have with our neighbor to the east at number eighty-six. Not sure exactly the structure, why those variances came into play, but the plan examiner wanted them to be dealt with by you. But that, that remains. So that mutual driver remains. It provides access to the, our, our accessory garage building at the rear, as well as the neighbor to the east at eighty-six. He has a garage at the back. So those, those variances, seven, seven, six, seven and eight are related to that, to the driveway. But, but nothing changes as, as occurring, maintaining the existing condition. The front yard landscaping, again, because we're building on the footprint and we're keeping an existing stairwell down to the front of the house to provide access to the, to the, the lower level. All that remains. So the front yard landscaping is more of your, your approval of maintaining an existing condition, not something new created by, by this design. And, you know, we have a new rendering that was supported, was submitted, and I don't know if you're, if you could pull it up. It was part of the supporting materials document, a late submission.
No, so those are not available because they were submitted late.
Oh, okay, because we can see it on the, on the city website.
Yes, it's added to the file, but it wasn't given to the committee in time. That's why we have the deadline.
Or we could go, even if we want to go back to the, the first drawing that I submitted, where you see both houses together and what we've been sharing with the neighbors, you know, earlier on. The newer one came in later. It will change the style. But I think the, the cover page of that, of that submission shows the pair of semis, the way they, they are and together. So we're the closer one. To us is ninety and Robert's at ninety-two is beside us. So we've been working together to align main walls, to work on the roof slopes, create that dormer look at the top on a man's roof style. So we've been working together to align main walls, to work on the roof slopes, create that dormer look at the top on a man's roof style. And we're supportive of each other's variances that have been requested.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, panel members, before I go to the speakers list? Okay, um. Do you have the first one? Hi, Jennifer? Hi, Jennifer, I, um, can you try speaking?
I think Jennifer's one of the owners.
Yeah, I know, I just wanna confirm they're on both, so.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Jennifer, um, I believe you're an owner, I'm showing you as an owner of number ninety. But I'm also showing you on ninety-two, do you own both halves?
Nope, just a co-owner of number ninety.
Okay, so, um, because the agents already spoke on your behalf, um, that's the five-minute allotment. So I just wanted to confirm, so.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. Do I have Mary Helen Spence?
Can you hear me?
I can.
All right, thank you.
So go ahead.
Um, so I'm, I'm representing the ABC Residence Association and we have worked with both the applicants to make the, the, uh, changes that, that they have outlined to you. Um, I just want to be assured because you're saying these things were, were submitted late and that is correct, we were, because we were negotiating these in the hopes of being able to support them right up until very late last night. Um, that these changes will somehow be registered with the decision. So there's no question that what has, we have negotiated, in fact, will be what is approved. Along with the two sketches that, that have been supplied, there's, there are, there's, there's a sketch and a rendering attached to each of our letters. Um, we've submitted our, 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 what we are in agreement with. And each of those emails have a rendering for ninety and a rendering for ninety-two. And a, a, a picture of a facade of both of the, of both of the, um, the buildings that they have indicated they're going to create in red brick, and that's an important aspect of what we've negotiated. So I, all I'm really speaking to is making sure that this is all properly documented and the approvals are, are conditional upon the right things.
Um, Madam Deputy, Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, can you just confirm that, um, you have those drawings attached to the letter and that we can, um, attach it as material submitted on today's date if we choose to approve as amended?
So the materials, you know, we're running the hearings, we don't have time to go through all the documents. So I do know that the ABC Residence Association, the council's office emailed saying that they are now in support based on revision. I have not seen revised plans at all. That's not to say they may not have been sent to the application technician on file. But whatever decision the committee will be making in these two applications will be based on the revised variances. But the members themselves do not have the plans to refer to when making the decision because everything was submitted late.
But, but can I clarify that the, the, the sketches and the renderings will be part of, will be attached to, I'm just asking that they be attached to the decision?
It can't be attached to the decision because I don't have them in front of me. They will be added to the file for record-keeping purposes.
Well, will that file, will that file go to city planning?
You mean, no, this building?
Sorry, to the building, I'm sorry, to the building department, when they.
When the applicant submits plans for a building permit, it will have to reflect the variances in the decision. But they're not going to look at whatever plans are in the committee of adjustment file.
Okay, I, I'm wondering if I could get a commitment, uh, from both of the, um, applicants that in fact, they will, they will ensure that these renderings and these, and, and, and the plans that they gave us are submitted with their, with their, um, to the building department when they apply for their building permit.
Okay, um, I guess, Mr. McCauchy, you heard the question, can you commit to that?
Get rid of the.
Hello, sorry, so you'll commit to having the correct drawings should the committee choose to approve the, the application as amended?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kirschenblatt, uh, same question?
Hi, um, I'm just, I'm just consulting with my client about how to answer that question. Um, but I think, I mean, we, he's telling me I should disagree, that we can, we will commit to working with, work, working with that sketch. Ensuring the building perimeter drawings are more, in general conformance, let's say, with that sketch.
So we're basically asking, what, what the question is, is that you're committing to, when it comes to building, uh, you know, building approval stage, that the plans are gonna reflect any decision uh, that the committee makes, uh, with respect to the two variances that you've amended?
I understand that and I agree.
Okay, thank you, okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Spence?
Madam Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I, earlier on, what I was going to suggest is that we try and tie any approval that, uh, is, that comes forward to the set of drawings that we have and, uh, standard clause that the development occurs substantially in accordance with the drawings. We can't do that because the variances have been removed and the vari- the elevations indicate, uh, dimensions that are no longer valid. The only drawing that we have in our packages that doesn't have dimensions on it is under number seventeen, it's in the correspondence in opposition number two, there's a rendering. That's the only drawing I can find that doesn't have elevations on it. Does it illustrate what the, um, what the opposition is concerned with? Can, can somebody pull that up on the screen, it's a, it's a rendering, it's a, it's a perspective rendering and it's attached under, um, H three A correspondence in opposition, yeah. It doesn't have elevations, does, does that drawing reflect the concerns that the people would like to have, um, somehow codified? I, I'm trying to figure, or if it's more detailed than that, the, then it's the elevation drawings and they're not, they're not useful for us because they've got, they've got dimensions on them, but these drawings here don't have dimensions.
Not just myself, but, I'm sorry, I, okay, so, I, I can't, I, we have, sorry, but I represent a, an organization and can't make the decisions to agree with that. We, we agreed with the two applicants to changes that are, are both for the variances and commitments they have made. So I guess what I'm going to say to this committee in front of those two applicants, that we expect they will carry through with every detail that we have, that we have agreed to. They have emails from us, they have pictures, they have renderings. So it's pretty clear to us and should be to them what we've agreed to. And I will have to assume and take their word that they will follow through and make sure those, those, uh, those details are followed. As will the counselor.
Okay. Um, any other questions, panel members? Okay, I have one more speaker, thank you very much, Ms. Spence. Uh, Leanne, are you there? Okay, maybe just try.
I have a caller, um, with a phone number that starts with six, six, seven, could you just state your name and what file you're here for? Because I can't s- tell if it's a speaker for this file.
Sorry?
Hello, um, can you, was this, can the speaker for the phone number that starts with six, six, seven? Um, unmute yourself and tell, uh, state your name.
Yeah, it's, it's Gacy and Leopold, I'm the owner of number ninety, I'm just listening in, um, that's all, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, have you tried? Oh, you tried twice already, okay. Okay, um, Mr. McCauchy, I'll start with you. Um, do you have anything else to add with respect to, um, Ms. Spence who spoke on behalf of the ABC Residence Association? With respect to her concerns about the plans?
If, if the, if the committee is, if the committee is feeling uncomfortable with, uh, like I can go to the section and, and kind of talk about what is at work, it's, it's really simple, it's just the back, third floor. Uh, we had a wall and that changed to a roof, just, like, the front of the house is the same.
No, I understand, but you've done the presentation, so we're now, I'm looking at, um, the uh, person resident, uh, representing the Residence Association is, has concerns that, you know, regarding that the right plans are ultimately is what's going to be built, so at building stage. So those, that was the main concern that I heard. So I just need you to speak to that, I think you've already said that you are going to provide the proper drawings at the building stage. So is there anything else you wanna add on that front?
Uh, no.
Okay. Um, Mr. Kirschenblatt, the same, um, question, the main concern expressed is really that, you know, for both halves of, of the semi, that, you know, the agreements made are lived up to in terms of the drawings as it relates to the variance changes.
Yeah, I, I was listening to Ms. Spence speaking. There is much correspondence between A, B, C, and, uh, both of our clients, Roberts and mine, that it, with undertakings to conform to the decisions and agreement that were made between us for their support. So we're good with that. And, and reply to Mr. Kniffel's, uh, view, when we looked at those three D views that I had submitted of the two homes, the, the differences that you see in the adjustments to the variances are, are very minor. You, you really want, wouldn't even pick them up on, uh, on a revised rendering. So the homes continue to, to appear to be the same style, same look, enhanced, in fact, they're enhanced. And, uh, we've all agreed on the red brick as Ms. Spence has asked for. Uh, and both houses will be using the same bricks in style and, and, uh, we're looking forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Panel members, do you have any questions for either of the agents? Okay, are we ready to take it into committee then? Okay, let's do that, any comments?
Yes, I can start with my comment. Uh, I'm actually quite comfortable to, uh, look at two, uh, applications as amended and also, uh, 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 reduce, uh, without having to have the, uh, sketches that not being submitted on time. And also, I do not feel that we need to put a condition to say that the private agreement with, with the two parties are part of the conditions. I think that we will trust them to work together and honor each other's agreement. That's my comment.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, did you wanna move a motion, Ms. Chan? Um, so we're, we have, so we have, so we have to do them separate, okay, so we're gonna start with item seventeen?
Yes, item seventeen, I, uh, I'm, I will move for proof of as amended, uh, uh, mentioned earlier, deleted, uh, variance two and, uh.
Three?
Uh, and three, yes, and also modify number five and, uh.
So nu- number five is being amended to one, one hundred ninety seven point eight meter square, which is one point one seven times the FSI and then variance eight. It's still zero meters and point four five.
Yes, and also with the, a condition of forestry number one and three.
Okay, so, do I have a seconder, Ms. Valentini? So all in favor of that motion? So your application has been amended and, uh, approved with the amendments and forestry conditions one and three. Okay, now number eighteen?
Number eighteen, I also, um, I'd like to move for proof of, uh, with the, uh, with the amended, uh, uh, variances and the forestry, uh, condition number one.
Okay, so the motion for the amendment is variances nine and ten, uh, have been changed to ten point four nine meters. And that's moved by Ms. Chan, including number one forestry condition and seconded by Ms. Valentini. Okay, all in favor? So your application has been approved as amended with forestry condition number one. Okay, thank you, everybody. The next item is item number nineteen seventy-two, Montrose Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have planning rationale submitted by David Riley and Raymond Zimba Consultants. We have email correspondence from planning, they don't have any concerns. And forestry is asking for condition number three. We have three letters in support from owners at seventy, seventy-four, and seventy-six, so that's both adjacent neighbors. Is the agent there?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, can you just identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm Raymond Zimba from SGL Planning and Design, Inc., located at one thousand five hundred forty-seven Blue Street West. I'm representing the applicant Antonio Santini of Red Studio, Inc.
Okay, I don't think we need a presentation, uh, planning, panel members, do you have any questions? Okay, um, Mr. Zimba, we don't, uh, have any questions, we've read all the materials. Uh, we don't need a presentation, is there anything that you wanna add that wasn't in the submissions?
Uh, there's no information, I'd just like to reiterate, the applicant has been working diligently with city staff to reduce the number of variances and working with adjacent neighbors to ensure there are no adverse impacts. And this is reflected in the letters of support and the, the no comments from city planning.
Okay. Well, we'll take it into committee then for a decision?
Um, I'll start, Chair, it just, I think this is fairly straightforward, uh, so, um, you know, it's, it's nice actually to see, uh, a lame waistcoat without variances, so congratulations to the, the applicant. Um, uh, and the variances for the work on the principal residence, uh, in my view seem, uh, comparatively minor. So, uh, I'm happy to move, uh, approval of this application, um, uh, subject to the standard engineering condition.
Um, forestry number three, I think, yeah.
Oh, beg your pardon, I missed that, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know about engineering conditions, but unless I missed something, but forestry number three for sure.
Yes, there are engineering.
Are there, are there? Oh, I missed it.
Yes, there are engineering, yep. Well, I missed the forestry, you missed the engineering.
We're even. Okay, um, do I have a seconder for that motion? Okay. Carl, all right, motion to approve, including the engineering conditions as well as forestry number three. Moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Kniffel, all in favor? The application's been unanimously approved, thank you. The next item is item number twenty, one forty-seven Durant Avenue. We have before us the copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have seventeen photographs of properties on Durant, Lancon, Northridge, and Milton Road, as well as Coxwell Avenue. Uh, a number of decisions from other properties. We have email correspondence from Transportation Services, as well as community planning, planning's looking for screening. Um, and transportation is also okay. They had a concern about driveway width. and transportation is also okay, they had a concern about driveway width, but I believe that that's no longer relevant. There are three form letters in support, signed by owners of one forty-nine, one fifty-one Durant, and fifteen Langken, uh, and opposition from sixty-six Langken, I'm showing one speaker, and Mr. Kniffel has an interest, so... Oh, so the speaker's not presenting, so I guess... They're not online, it's, it's okay, all right, is the agent there, can you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, hi, my name is Leo Mastandrea, I'm the agent for the owners at one forty-seven Durant.
Hi, um, panel members, do you need a presentation? Okay, can, um, do you have any questions for the agent? Go ahead, Ms. Chan.
Yes, I just want, I, I would just like to know, uh, whether, uh, variance number three is being deleted?
Um, yes, um, so in speaking with the planning department, they asked me to remove variance number three, which I've agreed to, and it's so minor that it's not even affecting anything, so we, yeah, we're in agreement with that, and we're also in agreement with the screening.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And also, I'd like to mention, I'd just like to mention one other thing, um, we also got verbal support from forty, one forty-five Langken, which is the other direct neighbor, one forty-three, uh, sorry, one forty-five Durant, which is the direct neighbor, one forty-three Durant, one forty-one Durant, sixty Langken, and sixty-two Langken, we, we, they've, uh, have no concerns, but they didn't want to sign any, uh, support letters.
Any other questions, panel members? No more questions, uh, Ms. Valentini?
Sorry, trying to unmute, um, can you just speak to the height variance and the, um, floor space index variance that's being requested, I was just looking at the, the, um, plans, and it looks like this is gonna have an integral garage, and your building kind of wider than most of the houses have a driveway between, um, so I'm assuming that's reflected in the FSI, does this fit within what is going on in the neighborhood? Because it seems, um...
Yes.
From what I can tell, looks kind of large, so can you speak to that?
It's very consistent with what's been approved, I've submitted a, uh, we've done a, the research request within five hundred meters of the subject property, if you look at number three, page number three of my submission...
I see, so under previous decisions, is, I guess, is what you're talking about?
Yes, under previous decisions, page number three, which I'm labeled at the bottom, keep going down, the next one, yeah, so that one's been approved at eight point four.
What's the address on, oh, that's ninety Durant, okay?
Yeah, that's ninety Durant, and if you go to page number twenty-six, uh, ten Milton, which is just around the corner, that was approved at eight point three, um, and if you go to page, uh, twenty-nine, or, yeah, twenty-eight, twenty-nine is eleven Coxwell, that's been approved at eight point four six meters, um, if you go to page thirty, at twenty-four Fair Side, that's been approved at eight point six two meters, and if you go to page number thirty-three, thirty-two, that's also been approved at eight point one, eight one meters, and, and then...
But there are any that have the height and the FSI variance, because...
Yes, there are.
Like I said, this is an integral garage, it appears wider than what's, what currently is in the area on this section of Durant, as far as I can tell, so is there, do you have any that have that combination of both?
The combination of, of both, uh...
Like, you're asking for height and FSI, so I, I, you know, I have concerns in terms of will this fit in with what is currently there, or will it be much larger?
Um, well, no, the, the FSI is also consistent with the area, um, in combination, I didn't, I didn't do that study, but I did do a study, uh, separately, and also, if you want to look at the separate GFAs, um, on sixty-four Durant was approved at seventy-eight percent, and if we're just looking at Durant itself, um, also at one eighty-four Durant, it was approved at, uh, point seven two percent, and even behind us at Langken, it was also approved at, um, seventy-eight percent, so, these are all within the immediate area, and consistent with what's being asked for here at the committee. There are some asking for, for example, if you look at sixty-four Durant, okay, page number one of my submission, they've asked for, they didn't ask for the, uh, they did not ask for the same, um, roof height, but they did ask for a main wall height from seven meters to eight point five nine meters, which is way above what we're asking, and they have also approved at seventy-eight percent. And planning did not have any concerns with these variances, they asked me to remove the driveway, which I've agreed to, and we have verbal, we have agreements from both adjacent neighbors and to the rear.
So, just to clarify, are you removing number three variance?
Yes, we are removing the driveway width, because that's what I agreed with, with the planning department.
Okay, so you're amending your application by removing variance number three, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, panel members? Seeing none, I'm Ms. Valentini?
No, I'm back up, I, so I'm still trying to wrap my mind around the, how it's wider and wider, is it just in, so I'm looking at your... I guess this must be the site plan, is it just the front portion that's wider, and then it jogs back?
Yes, it's just the front portion that's wider, correct, and then it jogs back behind.
This is, this is an alteration, this is a complete new build, so...
Correct, so that's why we...
You're building at the rear over the existing footprint, but the front is going to be wider in terms, there, there it is, in terms of the, the integral garage, because I mean, I feel like that adds to the, the size and the, the weight of the, in terms of the, you know, the massing, sorry, I'm losing my words, we've been doing this for a while, the massing of the property, so, um, but you've got it set back, uh, halfway, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, we're ready to go into committee, anything that wasn't in the submissions that you want to add? Anything, Mr. Mastandreas?
Um, no, not unless you have any other questions.
No, we're good, okay, we'll take it into committee. Uh, discussion, comments?
Uh, Lisa, you okay with this one now, or? Okay, um, again, I'm, I, uh, I'm happy to move a motion, I was fine with it, I, I was convinced by, um, the agent's, uh, description of similar kinds of, uh, builds, uh, in the neighborhood and on the street, these are, uh, bungalows on a street, I mean, it's not surprising when we start seeing these kinds of applications for this kinds of property, and look like a large lot, so, I'm happy to move, uh, approval of this application, um, I understand that the agent said he was aware of planning's conditions for screening, so we'll just, uh, add planning conditions.
Okay, so it's as amended, right, because variance number three has been removed?
Removing variance number three, thank you, Chair.
All righty, so I have a motion to approve the application as amended, variance three has not, has been removed, and the screening condition in the June eighth planning report, do I have a seconder? Ms. Chan? Okay, so seconded by Ms. Chan, moved by Mr. Clay, all in favor? Okay, the application has been approved as amended, all right, um, we're going to take a break now. Um, I think, uh, we'll be back at, uh, three o'clock, is that okay? All right, so the committee stands adjourned until three o'clock, and, uh, thanks for your patience, everyone, we are running a bit behind. Okay. It's gonna make it longer, but... What's that? Yeah, well, you guys have the, you're under the union rules too, right, I mean... Personally, I'd like to ram through, but, you know, it's... It's crazy. Where's the subway? Yeah. Like, actually, they did it fast this time, but I think they forgot to put mayonnaise on. I think they gave me the wrong bread, but anyway. Yeah, that's still okay. Mm-hmm. The which? The dock? The dock? Well, um, it's going good. The, um, the guy emailed me last week and he goes, "Yeah, I think you need to go check the water depth." Yeah, had we had way too high lakes for the big piece. So, anyway, got all fixed. They're supposed to come July first or second. Yeah. I've been looking for an outboard motor, 'cause the cottage came with a tin boat. And then, but it was kinda dented, because I think I told you, they haven't touched this place in god knows how long. And then, some new people, they were getting rid of the tin boat. So, I said, another, so I took it, 'cause I wasn't sure if it was seaworthy or not. So, I have two. There isn't, outboard motors used, pieces of crap, brand new, nowhere. Nobody has anything. So... I've been in the lake swimming a lot, like hauling rocks and stuff, 'cause the water stopped working. My neighbor just texted, and finally, so when we went up Friday, the Kubota machine was there. So, the, he was just, he's been sending me pictures, like, the whole weekend. 'Cause I had to bring sand, it was a whole shit show, 'cause there's no depth, 'cause of the rock. But anyway, just texted, the inspector came. And it's, it got the thumbs up, so things are, you know, slowly happening, yeah. Yeah. How are you settling into the job? Yeah? Are you a planner also? Like, studied, did you s- Mm-hmm. Were you in a small town? Yeah, I know. Like, especially the first time I went to the OACA conference. It was like... I mean, I don't wanna call them, like, rednecks, but it was kinda funny, because they're talking about these major problems. Like, what we do is like changing the world compared to what they do, right? And it's councillors sitting on a lot of these committees. So, they were councillors, actually, from these really tiny places. And I'm, I'm like, "Really? Like, that's a problem for you?" 'Cause that, when I just started, it was brutal. Like, we, we were doing fifty-seven applications, fifty-eight, we were here till eleven at night. And these guys are complaining about three applications every six months. Right? I'm like, "Really?" Mm-hmm. Oh, really? You did everything. Where was this? Okay. Yeah, actually, we, to go to our cottage, you go- We, um, we actually goes up through Axle Lake. So, we go pa- yeah. So, we pass the cutoff to Bob Cage, and I always get the highway mixed up. I think it's thirty-five. Well, it's past Peterborough?
Yeah.
Past, like, the lake field, and then, yeah. Toward Bancroft.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. I know. Mm-hmm. Are you from here originally?
I'm from Kinnawarra, so not very far, but I'm familiar with, like, the city life. So, difficult to make friends up there, besides like your coworkers.
I like it up north, but I couldn't have living there. Some people live there all year. It's like, wow, I don't know, probably doing this.
Very isolating in the winters. And the weather up there is horrible.
Yeah, I grew up in Hall with so many drag of weed. And then, when I moved across from a dairy farm, it was like dying.
Oh, where? Oh, yeah, I know.
Like, Orangeville or something?
Oh, yes, that's not that small. Oh, cool.
I was a planner, but also doing secretary for a company.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it was all part of the same company.
Do you have to sit in the council as well, or do you have other people to sit in?
Well, it's all of the other guys.
Oh, okay. Still a lot of corporate, people realize how much work it is. On the back end. When were you at Calvin's? I had a couple friends. They were returning their, one of their masters, maybe twenty.
Oh, there. I'm sure it was there.
Okay.
This better go fast. I'm s- I'm tired, I think I still have the effects from that shot, 'cause I'm, like, just, yeah, like... See, even some of the stuff this morning, like, where the guys, like, "Hey, didn't mention Shaw Street." It's like, yeah, it's like, I'm looking at stuff and I'm not, you know, I'm just, I feel like a bit of a zombie. Tired. It's really weird. It's like a different tired. I ca- I can't even explain it, you know? I wish I could've stayed outside for a bit, 'cause it's nice out there. Anyway, I, I predict the afternoon will go much faster. Yeah, I think we're through the worst of it now. Yeah, way less. But they're also, they're also simpler. They don't have any of these things, I don't think, that we had this morning. Maybe one or two, but not like this morning. Oh, yeah, forgot, I have to read this again. Okay, well... Okay, well, I'm ready to read the blurb, whenever you guys are ready. I know we're all kinda still eating, drinking, but... It doesn't matter, I can read the blurb. Um, it'll save some time. I'm all about saving time. Whenever you guys are ready. They'll, they'll tune on, in when they hear it anyways. "Good afternoon. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, committee of adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted via WebEx, an online digital platform, and will be livestreamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and a provincial-" to comply with physical distancing requirements and a provincial order that limits attendance at public gatherings. My name is Nancy Omen, and I will be chairing this hearing. Panel members participating via Webex and who can be seen and heard are Lisa Valentini, Yim Chan, Larry Clay, and Carl Niffel. City staff will be assisting us throughout the meeting, including moderating the Webex platform. Agents, applicants, and other interested parties participating in this virtual hearing, registered in advance and will be connecting through Webex using a compatible electronic device. Their participation will be through audio only. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and it is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the city of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to the property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone who wants to receive a copy of the committee's decision for an application must submit a written request by email to the general email address for the Committee of Adjustment, Toronto and East York District Office. Please include your name, address, and an email address. All Committee of Adjustment and TLAB notifications and appeal updates will be sent by email only. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, known as TLAB, or, in some limited circumstances, to the local Planning Appeal Tribunal, known as LPAT. Appeal instructions will be set out at the bottom of the committee's decision. Participants who have registered in advance will be connected to this virtual hearing and will be muted automatically upon entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are, are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I'll comment when you're, when you're reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please speak slowly and clearly state your name and address. Please confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. Where required, the applicant or agent will proceed first with a presentation of the application, and then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have completed their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent will be unmuted and will have an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be taken into committee for a decision. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice are informed of the changes. Members of staff, do you have, uh, or, and members and staff, do you have any interest to declare in the afternoon segments? No? Okay.
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are you aware of any requests to close or withdraw an application this afternoon?
No, not today.
Okay, thank you. We will now proceed with the afternoon session. Okay, the first item is number twenty-one, four thirty West Moreland Avenue, North. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevation, and presentation materials from the agent. Uh, do I, I don't show any speakers in opposition, is the agent on the line?
Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, I'm Evangelista, on behalf of the owner of four thirty West Moreland.
Hi, um, panel members, I don't think we need a presentation on this, uh, do you have any questions for Ms. Evangelista, Mr. Niffel?
Um, could you explain any kind of screening that you propose, or have you had discussions with the adjacent neighbors about screening from the two decks, is, I believe, a second and a third-floor deck, and it doesn't look to me as though there's any screening provided? That may be something you've already discussed with the adjacent owners, I'd just like to know.
Um, we are at the time, we have discussed with the neighbors, um, and there will be a glass railing, and if, in fact, they find that, um, they want some type of greenery, uh, or opaque, um, we're amenable to that, and, but they seem to be, they were okay with what we're proposing, and that's the glass railing in the rear, and we do back onto a, a rear laneway.
Okay, I'm satisfied with that, because the, the, the decks are not very large, and putting a big long, a big high fence around them could be counterproductive, so if the neighbors are satisfied, that's fine, thank you.
Any other questions, panel members? Seeing none. Uh, Ms. Evangelista, we don't require a presentation, we've read all the materials, there are no more questions, is there anything you wanna add before we go into committee that wasn't submitted already?
Providing we are all okay with it, um, I'm ready to proceed with being in committee.
Alrighty, we'll find out. Okay, we'll take it into committee.
Madam Chair, I, you know, on first blush, looking at the variances, there was a few things that caught my eye, but I think, um, the way they've managed the setbacks in both the front and the rear, helped mitigate in terms of any variances for height and, um, or for FSI, um, so I'm, I inside the height for the side wa- exterior sidewall, sorry. Um, so I feel that that mitigates any impact it'll have, and we've also, uh, believe there's been, um, uh, examples provided by the applicant to show that this is in fact, uh, in keeping with what is currently going on in the neighborhood, so, uh, I don't know if my colleagues wanna add anything further, but I'm happy to bring forward a motion, uh, for approval of this application, and it is not subject to any conditions.
Okay, do I have a seconder, Mr. Niffel? Okay, motion to approve, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Niffel, all in favor? Your application has been approved. Item number twenty-two, one fifty-five Fern Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, a covering letter from the architect, comparison of existing and proposed site plan, also submitted by the architect. We have five form letters in support from number one forty-nine, one fifty-one, one fifty-three, and one fifty-seven, which are adjacent, as well as one sixty-one. Do I have the agent on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, can you-
In fact, I'm not the agent, I'm the owner of the property.
Okay, can you just identify yourself, uh, name and address for the record, thanks?
Yep, Elizabeth Brookman, of one five-five Fern Avenue.
Okay, uh, panel members, I don't have any speakers listed, and, um, do you need a presentation?
No.
No, do you have any questions, any, anyone? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. Um, Ms. Brookman, uh, we've read all the material, we're ready to go into committee to make a decision, is there anything you wanna add that was, that's not already been submitted?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. We'll take it into committee then. Mr. Niffel, did you have a question, or, I, I see your hand.
No, Madam Chairman, I'm prepared, I'm prepared to move a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I, the, the, I believe the variances are, are quite minor and reasonable, there are no negative implications to the depth or the floor space index that's required. As you've already indicated, um, the adjacent neighbors are in favor, I'd like to bring forward a motion of approval without conditions.
Okay, do I have a seconder? Uh, Ms. Chan? Okay, motion to approve, moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Ms. Chan, all in favor? Uh, your application has been unanimously approved. Okay, item number twenty-three, eighteen twenty Gerard Street East. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and we have a report from planning, and they're asking for a condition, um, for screening on the east side of the first-story balcony, and no other correspondence. Do I have the agent on the line?
I am here, Lynn Houston, I'm the representative for the owners.
Hi, um, panel members, I don't think we need a presentation, do you have any questions for the agent?
Sure, just a quick one, um, assuming that, uh, in the absence of a letter in opposition from the adjacent semi, that the adjacent owner is supportive?
Um, I have not had direct conversation with that owner, I believe they are.
Any further questions, panel members? Seeing none. Okay, uh, we've read the material, and we're ready to go into committee, is there anything else you'd like to add, Ms. Hussam?
Uh, no.
Okay, we'll take it into committee for a decision then. Ms. Chan?
Yes, I, I'm ready for, uh, to move approval, because I do not think that, uh, would create any kind of negative impact, and the, um, proposal is too straightforward, but I would like to impose the planning department's, uh, conditional privacy screen on the east edge of the rear deck.
Okay, do I have a seconder? Mr. Clay? Motion to approve, including the planning condition in the June ninth report, moved by Ms. Chan, seconded by Mr. Clay, all in favor. Your application has been unanimously approved, thank you. Item number twenty-four, ninety-eight Crawford Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, two photographs of the subject property, we have four form letters in support from number seventy, seventy-nine, ninety-six, which is adjacent, and one oh five Crawford Street. Can I, and I'm showing one speaker, do you have them? Okay, um, is the agent on the line?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, can you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, my name's Duncan Cameron, and I'm working on behalf of the owner.
Okay, I'm just gonna go to the speaker listed, because I'm unclear whether they're in opposition or not. Um, are you there, Mr. Baranski?
I am.
Hi, are you, are you listed to speak in opposition, sir?
Uh, no, I'm just here to support.
Okay, so you're just wanting to see what goes on, then?
Just listening in, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay, um, Mr. Cameron, I don't think we need a presentation, panel members, do you have any questions? Mr. Niffel?
There's, um, a letter of support, or a notice of support from number ninety-six, but there's nothing that I can see from, um, number one hundred, can you tell me if you know, uh, their position, are they in support?
I was unable to reach the owner, it's, um, very, it's multiple units at that home, and, um, uh, as far as I know, there is no opposition. Um, again, uh, there is two photographs entered, which are the garage as it was, uh, which was lot, onto the lotline, we're basically just trying to replace that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Mr. Cameron, we've read the materials, we're ready to go into committees, or anything you'd like to add that wasn't part of the submissions?
I don't think, I don't think so, thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks. Panel members, we'll take it into committee for a decision. Mr. Niffel, did you wanna speak?
No, I was gonna bring a motion of approval without conditions, Madam Chairman, I think this is extremely minor, um, and clearly doesn't have any negative implications for the neighbors, one of the neighbors is already recorded support, and the other one, we assume, would be, uh, in support as well.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve, moved by Mr. Niffel, do I have a seconder? Ms. Valentini, all in favor? Okay, your application has been unanimously approved, thank you. The next item is item twenty-five, seventy-two Dingwall Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, we have revisions to the plans that were submitted after the public notice was issued, and we do have those in our package, and we have a staff report from community planning, um, which is asking for variance number one to be revised to twenty-one point four, um, and that's what the drawings that, um, came after we got, I think they're in the supplemental. Um, okay, do I have the agent on the line?
Jeffrey Moats, agent here on behalf of the owners of seventy-two Dingwall Avenue.
Hi, panel members, um, do you need a presentation, I don't have any speakers listed, do you have any questions?
No.
No questions? Okay.
If the applicant can just outline the revision, for clarity?
Sure.
Yes, or, yes, of course, um, the existing soft landscape percentage, um, was coming in at a total of, well, uh, size was coming in at eight point seven meters squared, uh, planning reached out, uh, and we're hopeful that we could increase that, uh, as best we can, and so we were able to, uh, to carve out another six meters squared, and so that has now been increased to a percentage of twenty-one point four percent, um, and a revised zoning waiver was submitted, uh, with the supplemental material to represent that.
Um, I'm just trying to find it, because in my notes, I thought it was in some of this stuff. So, so the variance, you're changing variance number one to twenty-one point four percent, is that correct?
That is correct.
I'm just trying to find, um, okay, I have, yeah, the plan is attached to the revision, the, it's E four, is the, got the revised notice, so it's the plans that are attached to the submission you sent in with the zoning review waiver boxed in, and then the plan that's attached that shows the amended, the, the-
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, panel members, so we would, um, be looking at this as an amended application with variance number one being revised to twenty-one point four percent, and the plans that correspond to the revisions are in, um, in our labeled tab E four. Um, I can ask him, um, do you have the, um, do you have the meter square, Mr. Mo, by any chance? Just staff are asking.
Absolutely, fourteen point seven meters square.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Panel members, uh, Ms. Chan, do you have a question?
No, I will, I'm ready to move for approval, because I do not, with the orientation of these, uh, three houses, and adjacent label, I do not think that it will create, and, uh, too much of a negative impact, and I will move for approval with the variances that have been amended, number one, variance number one.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the amended application, variance number one is, is now twenty-one point four percent, which equals fourteen point seven meters squared, and as I mentioned before, the plans that correspond to this is in our tab E four, which was received by, uh, Committee of Adjustment staff. Okay, do I have a seconder? Mr. Niffel, all in favor?
Can I clarify?
Yeah.
Is the, does the motion include the planning department condition, because it, um, that condition asks that there be substantially, the construction be substantially in accordance with the revised site plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is it okay with you, Yim? Okay, good. Yeah, I'd second it with that.
Okay, so we'll add that condition from the planning report. Okay, so are you, you're seconding then, Mr. Niffel, with that added?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so the motion to approve then is, uh, as amended, again, to twenty-one point four percent, um, with, uh, corresponding to the plans in tab E four on our, um, on our agenda, and we will also add the condition in the planning report that's asking to, um, build substantially in accordance- in accordance with the revised site plan A dash 0.1 dated June 2nd. Okay, so that's moved by Ms. Chan, seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? Okay, so the application is approved. Thank you very much. The next item is item number 26, 47 Isleworth Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a covering letter from Mr. Grinnell, the applicant, a previous decision affecting this property, correspondence in support from 136 Hammersmith, 31 form letters from residents on Islesworth and Hammersmith Avenue, as well as Manor, Glen Manor Drive. And we have correspondence in opposition from number 49 Isleworth Avenue. And I believe they are, are they, do you have them on the line? Okay, we do have opposition listed. We had them on the line, but they've dropped. So if I can have the agent identify himself in the meantime, please?
Yes, my name is Ian Grinnell and I'm a co-owner of 47 Isleworth Avenue with my daughter Erin Lee Grinnell.
Okay, thank you. Just give us a minute. I'm just gonna try the, the opposition. While we're trying, I guess I'll just ask you, they're at 49. Have you had any dialogue with, with, it's Ms. Farrell and Mr. Dawson?
No.
No.
Not, not directly. With the previous item which was approved for the driveway, they requested certain items to be changed and I agreed with everything that they requested and it was approved. But in this case, there was no request for any mitigation. So I haven't.
All right, well, I have them, we have them on the line now. So if you could just do a brief presentation, no more than five minutes regarding your, the one variance that you're asking for and why you need it. And then we'll see what their concerns are and then you'll have a chance to address their concerns.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have applied to the committee for a minor variance to exceed the FSI in order to convert my existing attic to a livable, a playroom for my grandchildren. This is an interior renovation only. What I've done is I've addressed the four tests in order. So number one, the minor nature of requested variance, the zoning bylaw, as it applies to my neighborhood in Ward 19, Beaches East Jarg, allows habitable space on a third floor provided certain requirements are met. Converting my attic to livable space will add to the floor area and exceed the floor space index. However, there will be no change of height, no change of massing, scale, or character. A new window, which I have shown on the south elevation facing away from the street, will be required on the third floor to comply with the OBC Section 9723, minimum window areas at the building's permit stage, if I get that far. But this will have no impact on the neighborhood, in my view. Number two, appropriateness of development. The requested variance is consistent with the zoning bylaw in terms of use. It is appropriate to convert my existing unused attic space to livable playroom space since it will transform unused space into useful, much-needed play space with no negative impact on my neighborhood. My young grandchildren visit me frequently. I have six of my eight grandchildren that visit and are living in the area. As a single person, I'm allowed to be in their bubble, but I have no place for them to play indoors during inclement weather and particularly during this lockdown. That's the thing that has struck me about this lockdown is that I really don't have a place for them to play inside. And after feeding them and inviting them to watch TV, they get bored. My requested variance would allow me to provide such a space. Official plan, the official plan designation is neighborhoods. The proposed development is consistent with the policies for neighborhoods and will respect and reinforce the physical character of my neighborhood. Policy 5C regarding prevailing heights, massing scale, and dwelling types will be respected since there will be no change to any of these aspects if my variance is permitted. Also, I believe the proposal is consistent with the prevailing physical character of the properties in both the broader and immediate context. There are three-story houses on Hammersmith Avenue, sorry, on Isleworth Avenue and Hammersmith Avenue, the immediate context, broader context of the beach. There are three-story houses on streets such as Hamley Avenue to the west, Glen Manor Drive, and Balsam Avenue to the east, for example. I've shown photographs of all of these three-story houses. With regard to the zoning bylaw, the zoning bylaw identified those floor space index as 0.73 times the area of the lot. There's at least one other neighboring single-family dwelling with a slightly greater FSI. Around the corner, 135 Hammersmith, less than 50 meters away, has an FSI of 77.63. Floor area of 168.4 square meters and a lot area of 216.94 square meters. There are several other three-storied houses on Hammersmith Avenue and one on Isleworth that have an apparent density in the same range, although I don't have those FSI calculations. I've looked at the specifics of the zoning bylaw for the following in an effort to show the percentage increase over the lawfully permitted FSI is reasonable, less than 50% increase. I'm really not quite sure about my interpretation of the zoning bylaw at this stage, but I think regardless, I think that the impact is negligible. It would just be a window on the south side to comply with the, with the OBC.
Okay, you're, you're about to hit five minutes.
Here.
So I'm going to go to the opposition, but as I said before, you'll be back to address the concerns raised by them. All right, do I have Hillary? Yeah? Are you there, Hillary?
Hello?
Hi, okay, I can hear you now. Can you please identify yourself, name and address for the record?
My name's Hillary Farrell and I live at 49 Isleworth Avenue.
Okay, you have five minutes to express your concerns. We're starting the clock now.
Okay, I'm also here with my husband, Robert Dawson. He was, he was on the meeting. I appreciate you calling. He was on it in his office in the other room. I, I guess really, we, we were just, I guess, surprised to get the paperwork. It wasn't something that Ian had discussed with us, even though we are next door and outside all the time. And obviously, this meeting has to do with what's allowable by zoning. Certainly, I, I just wanted to, it, this may seem minor in the context of this request today, but it's, it's a brand-new home that is actually in, in our side yard and, and was created out of the backyard and side yard of the home that he used to own and severed the land and then built the home. And it is a very small lot, as you can probably imagine and can tell by the, by the drawings because it's made out of a side and backyard. I guess my, you know, our concerns are that, I guess there would be impact if the plan for, you know, was to turn it into more rental units. And I know that Ian has expressed that that wasn't his intention and certainly if, if he wants to make some kind of note of that, because that would have an impact. Certainly, I just want, it noted that Rob and I did want to, once we got the paperwork and Ian hadn't mentioned to us that this was his plan, even though we see him regularly after we got this, the notice, he, he wasn't home, his car was not there and we did hope to discuss it with him. But we sent the letter. It's not that we are object to, to neighbors, you know, improving their properties, just that we want it noted that in, if that was his intention, he's an architect by, by trade. The fact that the, the third floor is apparently ready to be, it, it can easily be changed into a habitable space, it just doesn't seem genuine when it could have been requested. And if it had been requested when the house was originally planned, it would not have been considered minor in nature. So we do have a concern already. Now there's parking, that is front pad parking, which is not in keeping with the neighborhood. There is only one other house on the street that has front pad parking across the road. And that, that window, I think, you know, Ian did take a picture of, of our home. I, I don't, you know, love, I, I, anyway, took a picture of the back of our home, which is actually on a full-size lot. I, I would like to, you know, for the committee to note that we have an entire backyard that you can't see in that photo and parking off of the back lane. And that, that window will be overlooking our backyard. So I suppose, I, I, two things, we just wish that it had been more transparent, in the same way we wish that the severing of the side and back lot and the new plan for the house had been more transparent. We wish this process had been more transparent. And if there's a window, I don't see why it couldn't be overlooking the street instead of overlooking our backyard since now there is a home where there never was a home before. So that window would, would basically be overlooking our backyard and the backyards of the homes that his family used to live in and, and were sold. Is there anything else that you can think of, Rob, that you wanted to?
I think that covers it.
Okay, so tho, those were, those were our concerns, that the window certainly, you know, if, if the committee considers it minor in nature, I, I guess we just thought it was good to consider it in the scope of the entire project. And if the window could potentially be on the front of the house, I think that would be reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, any questions of the speaker? Seeing none. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Grinnell, can you just address only the issues that were raised by your neighbor?
Yes, I apologize for not appearing to be transparent. We did discuss other issues previously and it would have probably been more easily, would have facilitated the process. In terms of the use, I really want to be perfectly clear. There is no intention of doing anything other than a playroom for my grandchildren. In their letter, they expressed a concern that there might, at some point in the future, be another rental unit. That's prohibited by the zoning bylaw, but if they feel that that isn't enough protection, then if the committee is able to impose another prohibition against anything other than a, a playroom space that would negate any potential possibility of a rental unit, I'd be happy to receive that. The reason that I put the window on the south side is because of the south light. South light is valuable both in terms of the amount of light, but it's also in terms of the, the, the heat that it provides, the passive solar gain. And so that would be my preference. I did, of the 31 letters of support, I received support from all of those landowners along the east side of Hammersmith that have a direct view of the roof and all those that have a direct view of the potential window. And all of them gave me their approval. I approached the owners on the north side of Isleworth and all of them gave me their approval. Those are the ones that have a direct view of any portion of the roof. So my strong preference would be for a window on the south for the reasons I mentioned. But if that would precipitate, if the change to north would precipitate a, an approval, I'd be agreeing, I'd, I'd agree with it.
Any questions, panel members? Okay, sir, we don't have any further questions, so we're going to take it into committee for a decision. Mr. Niffel?
Madam Chairman, I, I'm very supportive of this application. I think it is a very sensitive way of increasing floor area for a specific use in a way that doesn't create any kind of negative impacts on the neighborhood or the immediate neighbors. I think the use of attic space as livable space is a very reasonable and responsible way to provide for additional indoor space without the problems of, excuse me, extensions that might create privacy concerns. I don't have a concern with the south-facing window. I take the applicant at his word that it was to capture south light, which makes all the sense in the world. There is only one window in the whole top floor. Whereas we could probably add a condition that the third floor only be used for a playroom, it seems to me that that's, that's not necessary. That's, that's extremely onerous, I, I would argue. And if you look at the floor plans, there's nothing up there but open space. There's a, there's a, an open area beside a stairwell and the rest of it is all big open space. So I don't think the concerns that it might actually end up with being additional dwelling unit is something that is likely to happen. There just isn't the infrastructure there for that. Having said all that, I would like to move approval of the application without conditions. I think it's a very good, good solution and a sensitive proposal to the neighborhood.
Okay, do I have a seconder? Ms. Valentini? All right, motion to approve, moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Ms. Valentini. All in favor? Okay, your application has been unanimously approved. Thank you. Item number 27, 72 Rush Home Road. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a covering letter from Sean Killen, the applicant, three form letters in support from numbers 70 and 74, which are adjacent, as well as number 76. Okay, do I have the agent on the line? Can, can you check? Thanks. Okay, we just have to check if we have the agent on the line or not.
Hi, I have someone that's calling in with the phone number 633. Would this happen to be Aiden Kuter?
Uh, no, I'm number 416633, but I'm calling for 220 Millwood Road.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I have another caller with the phone number 452. Would you happen to be Aiden Kuter?
Yeah.
And, hello?
Thank you. Did you find them?
No. And a second caller.
Okay, so can I leave it with you for a minute? Panel members, I'm gonna have the staff try to reach the agent, but what I'd like to do is go back to item number 16, the heritage one. Apparently, there's been a compromise. Apparently, there's been a compromise that's been reached, so.
So Madam Chair, for 106 Babypoint Road, I did hear back from the person who wrote the report. And it did relate to the deck. So they've, and I've shared the email, I'm not sure if they have it. But what it comes down to, they're okay with not having the, the study done, provided that they don't dig for the support posts for the deck. But I think they want to safeguard themselves. So perhaps the wording can be changed that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall fulfill the following conditions to the satisfaction of archaeology heritage planning, comma, if required. And then that will give the division an opportunity to waive that condition if the plans for the building permits show that they're not going to be digging to support the deck.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so.
Do you want me to read the email?
I think I, maybe just let me get the agent on the line. I think we have him now. And then if you can just run through the exact wording again, and then the committee can make a decision to move forward with this that way. Okay? So is he, Mr. Hornibrook, are you there?
I am here, yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna have the Deputy Secretary Treasurer just read through how we should word this and see if that's okay with you. And then we'll deal with this application. Okay, go ahead, Barb.
Terrific.
So Dan, you saw the email, it was sent to you. They think are prepared to waive the study, provided that there's no digging for the deck, but they don't want to get rid of the conditions altogether in the event that your building permit plans don't show that. So the wording I've suggested to the members is that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the following conditions shall be satisfied, shall be fulfilled to the satisfaction of archaeology heritage planning, comma, if required. And then it'll list the conditions. And then if your building permit plans show the proper supports without digging, then they'll probably sign off so that you don't have to do the.
Right, right. You know what, that seems fair. And I'm appreciative of the opportunity, you know, to have you do this. In the end, maybe I have to anyway, I don't think I do, but that's fair, I'm happy.
Okay, so panel members, we'll take it into committee then and make a decision on item number 16, 106 Babypoint Road. You've heard the wording that the Deputy Secretary Treasurer has suggested, which is basically prior to the issuance of building permit, and I don't remember the rest, but that if required, the conditions be met that are in the heritage report. So I'm ready for a motion, Mr. Niffel.
Madam Chairman, I think that that condition is very reasonable and it provides for the archaeology integrity of the site, which I believe was the only concern that certainly I heard expressed by any of the committee members. Based on that, unless anyone has further concerns, I'd like to move approval of the application, subject to the revised heritage condition as read by the Secretary Treasurer.
Okay, do I have a second, Mr. Clay? I don't know if I see your hand, the clock's kind of in the way. All right, so that's moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? Okay, so the application has been approved with the revised heritage condition. What's that?
Good, move that clock.
Sounds like that game show, you know? Like move that. Okay. For 27, for Rush Home. Okay, let me reorientate myself here. All right, Mr. Coulter, you're there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Sorry, yeah, can you just identify yourself for the record?
Yes, I'm Aiden Kutter. And I am.
Okay. Panel members, I don't think we need a presentation, it's a fairly minor application. Do you have any questions for the agent? We're on 72 Rush Home Road. No questions? Okay. Oh, Ms. Chan?
No, no question, I'm ready to move for a proof.
Okay, well, hold that, okay, hold that thought.
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Coulter, we have no questions, we've read the materials. Is there anything that wasn't in your submissions that you would like to add before we take this into committee? Are you there? Because if you are, I can't hear you.
She's muted. She may have muted herself.
Okay, Ms. Coulter, you're muted on your end, so we can't unmute you. Can you unmute yourself?
Hello?
Okay.
Hi there.
Hi, okay.
Somebody is controlling the muting on your side, I think, sorry.
Yeah, well.
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, panel members, let's take it into committee. And Ms. Yim or Ms. Chan, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I just thought it was a straightforward application. Yes, I'm in support of the application because they also have the support of the two adjacent neighbors. And I think that it has very little impact to them. And then I'm ready to move for proof of with no conditions.
Okay, do I have a second, Ms. Valentini? Motion to approve moved by Ms. Chan, seconded by Ms. Valentini, all in favor? The application's been unanimously approved. Thank you. The next item is item number 28, 152 Delaware Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor, plans and elevations, previous decisions by committee that affect this property. We have presentation materials submitted by Mr. Moot. And we have a staff report from forestry, they're asking for condition number one. Can I have the agent identify himself, please, for the record?
Jeffrey Moot, Principal Moot Architect, agent here on behalf of the owners of 152 Delaware Avenue.
Okay, thanks. Panel members, I don't have any speakers. Do you need a presentation? No? Do you have any questions for Mr. Moot? Ms. Chan?
Yes, I sort of want to ask for the whole street. I do not see any other similar example for enclosing the front porch. That's my only question. Have you got any other examples that will have enclosed front porch?
I would agree that it's not necessarily a typical typology along Delaware in that area. The idea of a covered porch, you know, with a terrace above is quite common. There are a handful of examples on the street. I would suggest that they're not as well-integrated into the aesthetic of the home as I would like to see in some of those examples. They look as if they've been, they were constructed a number of years ago. I would say without perhaps some of the, you know, attention to detailing, as I say, that I would love to see. In this case, I think it's us acknowledging that there is some density on the site currently, which is not uncommon for Delaware Avenue. You know, there are the two and a half to three-story typologies along that street. And they don't necessarily have the depth that some of the other streets do. So the idea of a 25-meter, 26, 28-meter lot depth is common there. So it does lead to a higher density than some other areas. But in this case, we were trying to be sensitive to that and trying to utilize the architectural elements that we do have in the front of the home, which is the canopy. Trying not to extend out beyond to the north or to the front. There is a slight extension to the south, but trying to be sensitive, you know, with the established sort of character of the front of the home. And then trying to integrate this usable square footage, you know, into the footprint that's been established there.
Any further questions, panel members? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Moot, I think we're ready to go into committee. Is there something you want to add that's not part of the submissions?
No, I trust, hopefully you've had a few moments to review the rationale that I did submit. It was sort of a slideshow which speaks to the variances individually and explains sort of more clearly how each relates to this porch enclosure. But beyond that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions, and I thank you for your time.
Okay. And yeah, thank you for submitting presentation materials, always very helpful. Okay, let's take it into committee.
Okay, I just like to make a comment, it's not necessary that I do not support the application because I do not have actually a problem with also the variances. Is the, the front porch is always the issue of whether we like to keep the strip scrape uniform or there's an aesthetic issue on that. But I'm not totally too concerned if other members are not too concerned with that.
I'll just say, I just, no, I usually don't weigh in too often, but I did sort of, you know, go along the street and I think I saw a couple. But there are also the arches that are bricked in and which are actually, you know, give a more bricked-in, enclosed feeling than what's proposed here. So all in all, I agree, it's not a super common feature, but I don't think it'll be out of character. Anyway, go ahead, Ms. Valentini.
Check the words right out of my mouth. I was gonna just say I saw two other ones at least that were older-style, enclosed in porches. And I think this is an easy sort of, not too, in terms of impact, adding a bit more density. So I don't have a problem with the enclosed porch myself. I think it's common throughout the city that we see these in older neighborhoods to grab a little bit more square footage. I don't think there'll be any impact, in my view, I'm in support of it.
Mr. Niffel?
I am as well, I'd be happy to second the motion.
Okay, who had the motion?
So I will move for. Oh, Mary?
Add a motion, yeah.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion to approve, including forestry condition number one?
Yes.
Okay, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Niffel, all in favor? Okay, the application's been approved. Thank you. Okay, the next item is item number 29, 788 Salmon Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor, plans and elevations. We have a covering letter from Jay Smith, the agent, correspondence in support from 786 Salmon. And then we have eight form letters in support from 781, 782, 783, 784, 787 and 790, as well as 63 Freiter and 162 Woodmount. So basically, both adjacent neighbors are in support. Do I have the agent on the line?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Jay Smith, I'm the agent for 788 Salmon Avenue.
All right, panel members, these variances are quite minor, I don't think we need a presentation. Do any of you have any questions for Mr. Smith? Seeing none? Okay, Mr. Smith, we've read all the material, we don't require a presentation and we don't have any questions. Is there anything you want to add that wasn't part of the submissions before we go into committee?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So we'll take it into committee, panel members? Mr. Niffel?
Madam Chairman, this is a very straightforward, minor application. The variances that are requested are very small. The implication is minimal to none. It has the support of the adjacent neighbors, I'd like to move approval without condition.
Okay, do I have a second? Ms. Valentini? Okay, motion to approve moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Ms. Valentini, all in favor? Okay, the application's been unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Item number 30, 140 Glendale Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor, plans and elevations, previous decision affecting the subject property, presentation material from Desiree Ward, the applicant, correspondence in support from 179 Glendale, and four form letters in support from 136, 138, which is adjacent, as well as 146 and 148 Glendale Avenue. We have opposition from number 142 Glendale, which is the other adjacent neighbor. And I do have them listed as a speaker, and we do have them on the line. All right, can I have the agent identify herself for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Vonda Ely, and I am the architect and agent for the owners at 140 Glendale.
Okay, I'm gonna need you to do a presentation, no more than five minutes, and we're gonna start the clock now.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. In my presentation today, I'd like to briefly review the variances individually in the order they are listed in the zoning bylaw notice and speak to each one. Variance one is regarding FSI. The proposed FSI is .93. I would like to point out that the lawfully existing FSI is .84. If somebody could please pull up our supporting material PDF, please?
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you. And if you would mind going to page five of this presentation. This is it, yes? This is an exonometric view of the backyards of 140 Glendale and surrounding properties. And this is the existing condition. If you could now please flip to the next page. This is the same view showing the proposed addition and dormer to the back of 140 Glendale Avenue. What I wanted to explain is that in order for these owners to have more usable space for their family, we are proposing to eliminate the existing second-floor deck and enclose it for interior space. We are also proposing that the roof shape change on the third floor to allow for more usable floor space, and that increases the FSI. But the building footprint actually does not change at all. As well, on this view, on this page, you can see that 136, 138, 144 all have two-story rear additions of a very similar scale. And in reviewing the city's property map, we've looked at the area and 12 houses on our block on the same side of the street are deeper than our proposal. So in my opinion, this variance meets the four tests. I'd like to talk now about variance 2A regarding the dormer setback. If someone could please show page three of our CRVA plans, the proposed roof plan. Thank you. So we have located the north side of our, of the dormer to be directly on top of the existing north brick wall, which is resulting in a setback variance of only .22 meters, under nine inches. It's .45 meters allowable and the proposed is .23 meters. In my opinion, this variance is minor and meets the four tests. Variance 2B is eaves encroachment. We can look at the same page. You can see the existing eaves actually currently abut the north property line, as seen on this roof plan. The eaves of the proposed dormer are .13 meters from the property line and the allowable is .3 meters. This is a difference of only .17 meters, under seven inches. Given this small difference of .17 meters and owing to the fact that this does not exacerbate the existing condition, in my opinion, this variance is minor and meets the four tests. I'd like to move on to variance three regarding the rear platform setback. The owners are amending our application to remove this variance. The proposed ground-floor deck will step back from the north property line to comply with zoning setback of .3 meters, which will make this platform as of right. So this will mean that we are only seeking variances for, or variances 1, 2A and 2B. And in my opinion, each of the variances individually and together are minor, desirable for the appropriate development of the land and building, and maintain the general intent and purpose of the zoning code and official plan. I'd also like to note that these owners sent out 17 letters with contact information to neighbors ahead of the city notices being sent, including 142 Glendale on May the 6th, and on the week of May the 3rd, they knocked multiple times on 142's door. They've received support letters from five neighbors and did not receive any objections until seeing that 142 submitted an objection letter on the submission deadline last Wednesday, June the 9th. In my opinion, the owners have acted very sensitively to the neighbors and neighborhood. And again, the opinion, my opinion is that each variance individually and together meet the four tests.
Hi.
That concludes the presentation. Yes?
Can, yeah, can you just clarify? Are you removing a variance?
Yes, we would like to remove variance three.
That's the eaves troughs. Like, I'm looking at the notice, is, are you, is it four or which?
Oh, I guess it's number four and the numbered zoning variance is numbered three.
Okay, we, yeah, no, we, we go by the zoning, or not the, the notice that was sent out. So it's variance number four. The, the rear platform will encroach .15 meters into the required north side yard setback. Is that what you're removing?
Yes, it is. Sorry for the confusion.
Yeah, no worries. Okay, so we're removing variance number four. Okay. Panel members, do you have any questions before I go to the opposition? Do you want to hold them for now? Oh, Mr. Niffel?
I can hold mine.
Okay, great. All right, Ms. Drellis, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so the applicant is removing variance number four, which speaks to the rear platform. They're going to comply with the zoning bylaw. If you can just identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Catherine Drellis, the owner at 142 Glendale Avenue. Can you hear me?
I can, and you have five minutes. We'll start the clock now.
Okay, thank you. Despite the letters of support, my property is the only one significantly impacted by this application. Number 138 is a rental unit. The previous owners of 140 Glendale Avenue built an illegal addition. At the time, we protested at committee of adjustment, there, they had built the addition without a building permit. We went to the OMB and prior to the hearing, we reached an agreement to accept the addition with a restricted covenant in place. This was done to be good neighbors rather than have the, the illegal addition torn down. We are now faced with the fact that this is a new addition on top of an already illegal addition. It is 135% over what is allowed. This impacts both the neighborhood and me and my family personally. These variances are not minor and they are significantly in excess of what is allowed. The floor space index is 35% larger than what's allowed. This is a large addition on an already large lot, lot coverage. It sets a precedent and shouldn't be allowed. It also very clearly contravenes the City of Toronto official plan as well as its zoning code. In my letter of objection, I have more detailed considerations of that. The dormer is too close and there's approximately only 10 inches between the houses. There's no way to construct this building without traversing my property. This may cause damage to my garden, my house, or my property during construction, as well as it creates the need for ongoing traversing of my property for maintenance, which is exactly what setbacks are meant to address. One should have no need to go on another's property to access any part of their own structure. There's no north elevation provided, so we don't know what's planned. A three-story tower is being built. This exacerbates the overlook and privacy issues that have been ongoing since the first illegal build. What may, what is likely to happen, it also has the potential to create a sightline into my child's bedroom, which I very strongly object to. The roof eaves are too close, the gap is only 43% of what is required. There's potential for water damage by snow or rain from overhanging eaves or the improper drainage between the buildings. These buildings are very close together. It also impedes my ability to repair and maintain my own eaves by heavily restricting access to them. The platform deck has already been discussed and resolved. As well, what I'd like to comment on is this addition is out of character with the neighborhood. Roncesvalles Village is an Edwardian suburb of Toronto largely built before the First World War when streetcar lines opened up the potential for development on land that had been previously marketed garden farms, not unlike the Holland Marsh north of Toronto today. With the exception of High Park Boulevard, the neighborhood never had the stately homes of Rosedale or the Annex, but is a neighborhood of three-story family homes, all remarkably similar in appearance, today on leafy tree-lined streets. This application subverts the established character of the neighborhood in several ways. It's much larger, it does not respect the context of proximity to other houses, it contrasts the traditional look of the neighborhood, it does not respect the distance meant to be between the houses, it will set a precedent for huge overbuilds, and most importantly, it contravenes the intent and purpose of the City of Toronto official plan. Again, that's in my written statement, you can see. What isn't addressed in the zoning is the importance of green space. We are immediately adjacent to High Park and backyards in the neighborhood provide an important green corridor for wildlife living nearby. This addition and the coverage it will create will hinder the free movement of birds and animals. In conclusion, the site plan actually does not, does not include a proper survey. There's a discrepancy between the site plan and the two surveys that I have. I have issue as well with the, the designs as they've been submitted, but they're very particular issues. In the past, we've had issues with the property boundaries because this design is so close to the property line. At very most, I would like to see that proper surveys showing the lot lines be submitted with the application. And I ask that the property line and setbacks be lawfully respected as the zoning code has described. The last thing I would let to draw attention to the committee is that it, there's a procedural problem. The first notice that was sent out had the wrong site plan attached.
You're over, you're over five minutes. I need you to wrap up.
Okay, the second notice, yeah, I am wrapping up. The second notice was missing the requested variances. So in fact, the neighbors haven't been properly notified of this application. Anyway, thank you very much for hearing my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Ellie, are you there? We're just unmuting you, just a second. Okay, go ahead.
I'm there. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you please speak to the issues raised? And could you just tell me, what is the increase in square footage? You're going from .88 is what the OMB approved, and then you mentioned .84, right? You're going to .93, so how much are you?
Correct.
So how much are you really adding then in square meters? Is it from .84 or from .88?
It is point, from .84.
Okay. Okay, so if you can speak to the issues that were raised by the neighbor also?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Well, regarding the neighbor's concern about potential damage to her property and traversing her property, after having read her concerns last week, we have spoken with our contractor, who plans to prefabricate the north walls and then lift them into place so that no work will occur on 142's property. We have also, we have also talked with our structural engineer and we will be stepping in the north foundation wall by 24 inches and cantilevering the first and second floors on the north side to ensure that no work will be done on 142. The existing eaves, as I mentioned in my first presentation, are an existing condition. We are not exacerbating that condition. And in fact, the, the new eaves on our dormer will be set back further from the existing leaves. I do not believe there's a privacy issue regarding privacy and sunlight. The proposal does not exceed maximum building depth or height allowed. I'd like to point that out. In addition, I really want to point out, this maintains the existing footprint on the building. There are no windows on the second floor that could, that could look onto a bedroom, so I don't believe privacy is a concern. And on the third floor, we will amend the proposal to have a 1.5-meter-high privacy fence, so I don't think that that would, would pose any privacy concerns. Again, in my opinion, these owners have been, have shown sensitivity and consideration for their neighbors. And I do believe that all of these variances do in fact, both individually and together, meet the, the four tests of being minor, if you look at the numbers and the differences of what we're proposing, and appropriate to the development of the land, the building, and main, do, really do maintain the general intent and purpose of the zoning code and official plan.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions for the agent? No? Okay, if there are no questions, then we'll take it into committee.
I'm happy to start it and I'm sure I'll use my time. And I, I was looking at this in quite some, I, I think that the proposal submitted with the rear two-story addition, not that deep compared to others that are in the neighborhood. You think there's already a one-story structure there and think it was excessive. I thought that the agents and the owners of 140 were, deemed to have done a lot to address some of the concerns of the adjacent neighbor in terms of removing variant four and introducing some unique constructions that will help mitigate any concern about related construction activity. I think if it was three remaining variances, they in total are quite minor, have no difficulty supporting this, I think it is in character with the type of investments and additions that are being done in broader neighborhoods.
Okay.
Could make a suggestion there if I could, sorry. I thought I heard the agent say they'd be able to put privacy screening, opaque screening around the third, the upper balcony. If, if my colleagues agree, I think that would be a condition that I'd like to add.
Okay. Mr. Niffel, did you want to add something? Otherwise, Mr. Clay can move a motion.
No, I, I agree with everything that Larry said. I don't think that the addition is out of keeping with what already exists in the neighborhood. Unless I misunderstood, I thought the lady to the north indicated that she was at a disadvantage because there were no north elevations for her to review. And in fact, maybe she didn't get what we've got under the presentation materials because in fact, there is a north elevation there that shows what this proposal would look like completed. And I think with the screen, the barrier that Larry has suggested, privacy is in fact intact and I, and the addition clearly shows that there are no windows that would overlook the north property. So I, I just, I would draw to the, to the lady next door, to her attention, that there is a drawing and I, if she doesn't have it, perhaps the applicant could make one available to her. It's a proposed north elevation. I thought I, that's existing, there's proposed, yeah. I thought she said there wasn't one and there wasn't in the original submission, but this is in the architect's presentation materials. The only other thing I'd like to add is a thank you to the applicant for the exonometrics. They are so helpful in evaluating issues such as overlook and the context of your proposal is versus what's there, and I very much appreciate those drawings.
Okay. Anyone have anything else to add? If not, I'll go to Mr. Clay for a motion. Okay, go ahead, sir.
I move approval of this application, subject to removal of variance number four and adding that the upper deck, I believe it, it is the third floor.
Yeah.
Decided with opaque screening.
Okay. So I have a motion by Ms.
Do you want to put a height on that, Larry? Are you gonna put a height on the screening?
It's a standard, isn't it? 1.5 meters isn't that what we normally go with, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the amended application, which is the removal of variance number four, and with the condition to put opaque screening on the upper balcony to a height of no more than 1.5 meters. Moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? The application has been approved. Okay. Item number 31, 246 Perth Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have no further correspondence. Do I have the agent on the line?
Hello, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Arash Bahamin, the agent representing the owner at 246 Perth Avenue.
Thank you. Panel members, this is, these variances are quite minor. I don't think we need a presentation. Do you have any questions for the agent? Seeing none? Yeah, Ms. Valentini, go ahead.
Just, I know, you're, you're doing a semi-attached garage. Is the neighbor whose garage you're attaching it to, they're fine with it, I'm assuming?
Yes, we have the agreements with the neighbor in, in a form of the party bond agreement, as well as the verbal agreement with the adjacent at 244.
Okay, thank you. Unless anybody has any questions, I'm happy to bring a motion forward, Madam Chair.
Sure, just let me make sure that the agent doesn't have anything further to add.
Oh, of course.
Because we've, we've read the materials, but we're ready to go into committee, sir. Is there anything that you want to add before we go into committee to make a decision?
No, thank you.
Already? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Valentini.
Madam Chair, as you've pointed out, this is a very straightforward and minor application and I, I, in my view, it's a four tests. The neighbor is in agreement with them, they have all the agreements in place, so I'd like to bring a motion forward for approval of the application without any conditions.
Okay, do I have a seconder? Okay, motion to approve moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Ms. Chen. All in favor? Okay, your application has been unanimously approved. Okay, item number 32, 572 Windermere Avenue. We have before us copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Again, no further correspondence. I am not showing any speakers in opposition. Can I have the agent, please? Can I have the agent, please, identify herself for the record?
Hi. Hello, my name is Susanna Korkorca, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great.
Okay. Panel members, do you need a presentation? No? Do you have any questions of the agent? Ms. Valentini?
Can you, I just noticed for variance four, there's mention of the encroachment of the third-story dormer. It's going to be encroaching over the lot line, or maybe that's the eaves that, well, is that correct?
Sorry, is that number four?
Yes, variance four, yeah. Is it the eaves that are encroaching over the lot line? Yeah, if you could just explain that?
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's just the eaves on the north side, and the existing eaves do actually encroach on the lot line. But, yes, so we will do our best to try to keep it as close, but there's an existing chimney of the house, which is actually right on the property line. So we do have to keep the new eaves in line with that.
So just keep in mind that the committee cannot approve encroachments. They're only dealing with a zero setback, and if you are encroaching, you need permission from whoever's land you're encroaching on before you build that.
Okay, and we do have a support letter from that neighbor, so they are aware, but we will discuss that with them specifically.
That's great, that answers my concern, because that was my next question, was going to be if your neighbor is approved or what their position is, but, thank you.
Yes, yeah, we do.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, seeing none. We're ready to go into committee, Susanna, anything else you want to add? We've read all the materials. Is there anything that's not in this?
No, I don't, I don't want to add anything unless someone has a question, but it doesn't sound like there's any questions, so I'm fine.
Yeah, I think the questions have all been tabled, so we'll take it into committee for a decision. Okay. Panel members, any comments or motion, both? Ms. Chan?
If there aren't any more comments, I'm ready to support this and move forward. And I think the, the variances are minor and will create, meet the four tests and also create a little negative impact in the neighborhood. And there will be no conditions.
Okay, so I have a motion moved by Ms. Chan, seconded by Mr. Niffle, to approve the application. All in favor? This application's been unanimously approved, thank you. The next item, item number thirty-three, one seventy-three Swanwick Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have previous decisions that affected the following properties, thirty-eight Lyle, one thirty-eight Pickering Street, Part One, as well as one eighty-one and one sixty-six Swanwick. We have a staff report from planning regarding the planting of a tree. We have correspondence in support from number one forty-three Pickering Street and one oh-seven Hanaford Street. And I am showing, no, I'm not showing any, any speakers in objection here. Okay, do I have the agent on the line?
Yes, hello?
Hi, are you speaking on behalf of the owner, Mr. De Souza?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Panel members, do you need a presentation, or can we go straight to questions? Okay, do you have any questions for the agent? Ms. Chan?
Yeah, it's just about the staff report, the recommendation of planting a tree. I just got a little, do you still have to apply for permit to plant a tree if it's in the front or back?
I, I'm not sure, but we're willing to agree to that.
All right, but this is the first time I, I, I met this kind of condition.
I, I know, it, it's a request from the planner, it's a bit odd, but we will do it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, panel members?
So, do you plant one in the front, or there, you get a choice, right?
I have a choice, yes.
I've never, frankly, I've never heard of that before, but good on you for agreeing to it. Can I just ask, so you're, it looks like you're mirroring in the back what has been done to the adjacent semi, is that correct?
Yes.
Or something close?
Yes, it's, it's actually smaller, it's one-room rear addition on the second floor. Our GFA, our FSI is actually less than one-point-oh-one. It's act, in, actually, the physical space is point eight-seven times. The reason why it's larger is because there, there will be a new covered area at the rear on the ground floor, and the zoning examiner wished to include that as floor area. But in any event, I've given examples of other properties that are higher FSI than we do.
Any further questions?
I'm happy to move them, Chair, if you like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay, Mr. Mazzitelli, is there anything you want to add that's not in the submissions? We're ready to go into committee, and we've read the material. So anything that you want to add that's not in, in the submissions we have before?
Just, just to mention, I believe it's a very minor in nature, and it meets all the four tests, and it's very desirable, especially for the owner, thank you.
Okay, we'll take it into committee, and go ahead, Mr. Clay.
Sure, I'll, I'll just move approval of this application, subject to the planning issue of planting a tree wherever the owner sees it, and sounds like he's agreeable to that, so no other conditions.
All righty, and that's seconded by Mr. Niffle. Okay, so motion to approve, including the tree planting condition in the June eighth report from planning, moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Niffle, all in favor? The application's been approved with that condition, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, we're just about to end our YouTube stream for the PM session.
Okay, we're going to take five then.
Okay.
Okay, we have to switch the YouTube, we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll be back with item number thirty-four.
For those of you who are watching on our YouTube stream, we're going to be ending this particular session, and then you can find the continuation of it in part two of the PM.